Welcome, one, welcome all to our special formal session today. And we're going to go ahead and I'm just going to read the notification here. In accordance with Virginia Beach City Code 2-21, and by the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Virginia Beach, I hereby call for a special formal session of the Virginia Beach City Council on Tuesday, October 24th, 1:00 p.m., City Council Conference Room 2034, Building 1, City Hall, 2nd Floor, 2401 Courthouse Drive. The purpose of this special formal session is to allow the City Council to convene into a closed session to consider the following matters: building security, House Resource Center; public contract, EMS contract; public contract, something in the water; public contract, lifeguard contract; public contact, 8th Street; and personnel managers, council appointments to boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agency, task force, and appointees. At 6:00 p.m. in City Council, we'll reconvene in an open session in the City Council Chamber for the purpose of certifying a closed session and considering the following ordinance before October 17th, 2023. Ordinance to declare easements in excess of city needs and authorize the sale of easements to Dominion Energy Virginia Ray Electric Transmission Corridor in the coastal Virginia Offshore Wind Projects Districts 2, 5, and 6. Do I have a motion?
This is just a special reading.
Okay, so we're good to go? Okay. All righty, we are ready to go, okay?
Mr. Mayor, first presentation provided by our MPR Director. Over to draft 2024 legislative agenda to seek Council's feedback input as relates to next steps in terms of adding, removing, or staying, of course, with the current legislative agenda.
Hey, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of council. Thank you, Mr. Manager, for that introduction. So today, I'm here this afternoon to just present an updated version of the draft legislative agenda that we presented to you on October 10th pursuant to the City Council policy that was passed here a few weeks ago. Once the draft presentation is given to you, a public hearing is held. There is to be time set aside for the council to have further discussions and ask any additional At the conclusion of this presentation, we'll be looking for some guidance from you all on any items that you would like added or removed as we head towards our November 14th vote for final approval. As a reminder, here's just the timeline we've been working off of. Today's October 24th, given this presentation. As you all know, November 7th is Election Day. We don't have a council meeting that day. And so the following council meeting on November 14th, we will be presenting the final package to you all for your approval. Since my last presentation, we have had two additions to the draft agenda. The first one is the short-term rental policy statement that we discussed at the, towards the end of the last meeting. This policy statement just kind of aligns the city of Virginia Beach with other localities throughout the Commonwealth and looking to maintain local authority to regulate short-term This second addition comes to us from the Virginia, I'm sorry, the Virginia Beach Minority Business Council through their liaisons, council members, Rouse and Ross Hammond, along with Councilman Schulman. Here, they're asking the Commonwealth to re-establish the Virginia Minority Business Commission. This commission was established through the budget back in 2020. It was an initiative that was originally proposed by then-delegate Jason Miara. It was included in the budget. The commission met for, throughout 2021 and had some success getting some legislation passed, but they have not met since 2022, and the commission is set to expire in June of 2024. And our local commission would like to see this state commission continued. So those are the only additions to the legislative agenda. I'm prepared to answer any questions or to help with any issues that may arise here, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any questions or concerns at this point? Michael.
Would it be possible if we, if any other members wanted to join on to any of these, just to, we would send our name to you, doesn't matter. It only needs three, but if we wanted to just indicate our support by joining as a sponsor, would that be an option?
I would say it is certainly an option, Councilman, but I will also point out that in the printed draft version, none of the, we didn't, we didn't require a sponsorship of an individual item for the full agenda package, and so those haven't been included there. So we'd be glad to include that in the presentation for historic purposes, I guess, but in the final package, we're not including any of the names.
That's good information to know. I think that's a change from.
It is.
And maybe probably a good change.
Yeah, I think we're moving forward in the right direction. Chris, did you have something?
Yes, I've heard several, several concerned citizens that have kind of been following us throughout this year. And I know, I guess there was a, I understand that we weren't going to include the special election versus the appointment, but the General Assembly did kind of indicate that if there was unanimous support, that they would most likely accept that charter change. And so we did, as a group, come to consensus that we wanted to have the special election in January. And so the question that was posed to me was, why would we leave out that request being that we are now unified, that the public does want our point?
But I think the question, Chris, the answer was if we wanted to have a window of maybe six or eight months, that would not necessarily necessitate anything because it would take time. So I think once we get that resolved, you know, once again, like I said, I think a year, you know, is a difference, but if somebody were stepped down, you know, months before, you know, and it wouldn't be, that's my thought.
If I could just try to clarify one thing, too, and I'm not trying to get at all involved in your policy decision about whether or not to make appointments, but just as you did with this, with the Section 1 vacancy, you have an obligation to call for a special election. The question is, at what time you call it? And so the policy, real policy decision, because you don't really have a choice on that one, you have to, by charter and by state law, you have to ask for a special election. And so there will be a special election. The question is whether or not, how you're going to treat the vacancy in the office during the period between the occurrence of the vacancy and when this body asks and the court orders the special election to be. So it could be as short as you have here, which is about three months, it could be 12 months. And so the policy choice is, do you want the ability, as you currently have under the charter, to have that district represented by someone you appoint pending that election? Or do you want to have a 10-person council with the persons in that one district unrepresented during that period of time? It's been presented by some speakers as, well, we want to pick the person. They always get to pick the person in a special election. The voters will always pick. But the question is, for you, is how do you want to treat that intervening period, whether it be, depending on the facts, 90 days or 11 or 12 months? So I didn't mean to interfere, but I just wanted to make sure that we, that the point that we knew what, we were really what the question was.
Yeah, and now, you know, I thought it was my understanding, at least to hold back on that just for this time until we, as a body, can, you know, see how this goes. But once again, I just want to reiterate that all of the other cities in the 757 do appointments. As a matter of fact, Norfolk does an appointment without even a hearing. They just go with the clothes and pick somebody. And what we're looking for is the fairest way to do things. So, you know, I thought if we could just, you know, really address this, get through the year, and then after that. But once again, I think the point is that there's a little ambiguity there now among us, and, you know, I just thought if we could just hold back on this one, and, you know, we'll get it, right? Anybody else?
That's it.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I've got a question for you, Mr. Styles, if you don't mind. So in the present framework, if our obligation is to call a special election during, you know, for the, is it the next November? Is that, is that what the implication would be? Or we have the discretion to call an election sooner if we choose?
You have, you have some discretion. There are certain dates that are prohibited. For example, you can't have a special election on a date of a primary. And there are some other, there are some other limitations. You can't be within a certain number of days after a general election. If the term automatically ends within a few days, when the election would be, I can't remember that number as I'm sitting here, but there are some limitations. But yes, you have to petition for a special election on a date permissible under the statutes within a very short period of time after the vacancy occurs. So there's always going to be a special election unless, unless you're at the very end of the term and it would be elected in the ordinary course anyway. So the real question that you're answering is.
What do you want to do?
What do you want to do with that intervening period? Do you want to have it vacant so that the person's not getting, as some mentioned, the benefit of running as an incumbent? Or do you want to have somebody in that seat so that votes taken in that intervening period have someone representing those people?
That's your policy choice. If you don't mind, I'd just like to follow up. I'd like to see that at some point presented to us in a way where we can appreciate some of this kind of shifting timetables, and if it's not meant for this legislative package, or maybe it could be addressed by way of some sort of council policy, that we have that kind of shifting timetable, like what you, what you had suggested. And I think the public needs to be comfortable with, you know, how long are they okay with not being represented in their particular district? So sensitive to your concerns, I just would like to have some more conversation around it.
Okay, Michael.
Well, I'd like to see the council reach some consensus on this to the point that we could possibly include it this year. But whether or not we include it, I have a very strongly held view that's informed by conversations I have with people I represent and serve, and also members of the community, that it's very simple. I mean, it is a policy decision, as Mr. Styles has correctly pointed out, but it's more than that. It's not about whether we would leave it as a vacancy as vacant until the election that could have, could occur. It's schedule the election at the earliest possible time that it could occur, and the seat would be vacant until then. Because the district system has changed the manner in which council representation is elected by the body. And so 10 members, nine districts and one mayor presumably, would be making a decision to fill a seat that none of us are accountable to the voters within. So I think the 10 district system, which many people were champions of and which the public was broadly supportive of, informs our decision. It's very clear what the decision should be in my mind and in the minds of many of the people I spoke to. It's let us elect our own representation at the earliest possible time that can occur. I don't think that's a complicated notion to include in a legislative agenda. And to Mr. Taylor's point, I think this body made a policy decision that reflects that position just a few weeks ago. It's, it's very simple. This is our, the principles upon which our country was founded: representation, elections. And we should not be anointing or appointing people if we don't have to. And people should have a chance to elect their representatives to serve them. And until such time as that can occur, the seat could be vacant. And as we've seen, that's not an unreasonably long amount of time. And it's not unlike what the General Assembly does. General Assembly leaves seats vacant until they can, at the earliest possible time, they can schedule a special election. And I don't see how the council, this body, should be doing anything differently. And that's a strongly held view from many of the people I've spoken to in my neighborhood, in my civic leagues. They want to choose their own representatives if a vacancy occurs, and I think our policies should reflect that.
Okay, if I could just, you know, you know, you know, give my two cents here, you know, but once again, you know, the question is, you know, keeping the vacancy open because once again, it's determined by the Board of Elections when the first appropriate time would come. Obviously, we would have liked to have it moved up, but it is what it is. So then the discussions become a vacancy where a district is not represented versus the other way. But the other thing is, too, I reiterate, that almost every city in the dip, in thing, elects a placeholder. We can put things on that that, I don't know, Mark, would it be possible to say the placeholder would agree not to run? Is that a possibility?
You can say that, but I don't know how you enforce it.
That's the point there, too. But I'm just saying, until, in the interim, what I suggest is that we, as a council, adopt a policy that we'll live by, and then, you know, field test it, and then bring it back for discussion. Okay, Chris, then, Michael.
Thank you, Mayor. In hindsight, had I known that we would be taking up some such serious issues while Sheriff Holcomb's seat was vacant, I may have opted for a different option and actually appointed someone in the interim, because I know some of you have received emails from District 1. They feel like their voice wasn't heard on this most recent vote. We have another controversial one coming up, Fly Cliff. We have some other issues. And so the truth being, we did make a decision, but as for Rocky, who was very enthusiastic about shouting out District 1, those residents are not having an opportunity to engage in their right to vote or have representation for this 90 days. So had I known these issues would have come in up, I probably would have tried to appoint someone for that seat, because I'm getting emails and they don't feel right now that their voice is being heard.
Yeah, and if I could just say this, it's, you know, as we look, you know, once again, it's important, but I think the thing is that we have a lengthy process in the appointment that a lot of other cities don't have. You know, for instance, we solicit people to come and that have an interest in the vacancy. And if I could use a drop in name, Dulcino Miles. You know, she came in and she did exemplary work for us, and this, that didn't run, but she was a very good placeholder at the time. So that kind of shows that it can be done. But the other thing, you know, you know, just going forward, you know, we have a exact, a long process where we solicit names. We make them public, and then they actually come and have a public presentation in front of us. In other words, interview for the job. But then we also, out of courtesy to the public, included a public hearing after that. So the public was allowed to come forward. So it was a little bit of a longer process that we took, but when we determined that the body wanted to have some public input on it, we did that. So, but once again, my recommendation is, we can pass our own policy and live with it, and then, you know, see how it goes, and then next time, go ahead and do that. Yeah.
The most efficient way to get somebody in would have been an appointment. We would have had somebody in, we'd run past in 45 days, which would have been about the middle of November. But the council wanted to have an election, so because of all the other elections going on, it's a very complicated thing. It's, it's really not that simple. It's going to be pushed off until second weekend, January, January 9th. So there's also the complications of what Bobby talked about, if there's only a few months. Dulcino was appointed in August. Now, there's no way someone could get a campaign going and do this. I think we need to be thoughtful about this, not rush into it. This is a great way to try it out, to see how it works, and see if we, if it really went really well, and then move on. But we, we need to clarify, you know, when do we appoint and when we don't. Like if it's eight months or less, maybe it's time to appoint. If it's more than that, maybe it's time to have an election. But let's, let's try this on and see if it works and how we like it, and then move on.
But at least come up with a policy that addresses the concern of the body. Michael.
Mayor, a couple of things. One is, I'd like to submit respectfully that we did know these issues were coming up. They've been on our radar for a long time. And, you know, the implications of those discussions may not, the full impact of the discussions may not have been aware to all of us, and I'll definitely acknowledge that. But we, we did know these things, we did know, and every week, in fact, we have decisions with, with consequence. And so that, that was well aware to all of us. But I will, Mayor, as strong of an advocate as I am for having a special election and letting the people decide who their representatives should be, which I think is, should be the default position for all of us, and I do think it's very simple. But I do think a council policy will cover it. I agree with you. I don't know that it would need to be in our legislative agenda. And so, Mayor, if you would be supportive, I would consider possibly, you know, working with the Attorney's Office and the City Manager to draft a policy that would cover some of those things. I do think that it would be obvious, for example, in the case of District 8, I think it was District 8 vacancy, and last year, that vacancy occurred past the filing deadline for that election. So there's no way we could have had a special election. And that was an obvious decision. But it really isn't that complicated, very respectfully. I think it's just very simple, as the earliest that we can have it, we should have it. And if, and if there is a period of time where, that it's abbreviated, such as the case with Dulcino Miles, then I don't think people would object to it, and that could be incorporated in our policy. I don't know what the sweet spot is.
Let's see if we can come to a win-win on this, you know, where we take into consideration, you know, the right for people to elect their people, but, but, but once again, the mechanism to have somebody in a seat that at least, somebody in the district can have contact with. So, does anybody mind if we go ahead with that recommendation? Any objections? Josh?
No, Mr. Mayor, I, I really thought what you said, Vice Mayor, was really important to kind of think about, because I remember as we were toying around with this, we kind of, like, the, the calendar being what it was, I think by that time, the person would have been appointed, they would have only served in like one or two meetings. And that's not to say that, you know, what we do on any given night isn't important, and representation all the time is important. But, but to think about somebody serving for a meeting or two after going through interviews and then a public hearing while they're trying to run for office is, I mean, that, that's a lot. So I think we do need, and I would join you in your request of our city attorney to kind of put some options in front of us, and if we can solve it by way of a council policy, because every, every vacancy is going to be different and different timing and all of that. But I don't disagree with anything you said.
Okay, are we okay to move in that direction? Amelia?
Yes, and just to mention already, there's buzz in the air of people who want to run. They're already preparing. And so anyone who wants to run, they have this opportunity because they know it's coming. Maybe we have people who don't want to go through the exercise of actually running that are throwing these complaints, but if you sincerely in your heart want to be in that position, roll up your sleeves and get at it. Thank you.
All right, are we okay to move forward? Okay, Patrick.
Mr. Mayor, what I'm hearing is that you want my office and Mark's office to work together, bring together a draft, and I'm surprised that you all have considered that kind of. It gives you all a timeline for you all to debate on when it's, when it makes sense to appoint versus when it makes sense to.
Yeah, maybe a couple auctions or, you know, that type of thing, but, you know, yeah, I think that, you know, this body would be willing that once we have a discussion and weigh the facts that put a policy in place, that I think would, you know, accomplish the goals of the members of the body. Okay? Okay, any other questions for Brian?
Thank you.
Okay, and I really support the NBC and their requests. I think that would be a real tremendous thing.
So, Mr. Mayor. Being that we're not hearing any other feedback for adding or removing, what is currently in your draft legislative agenda that was socialized to the public would now go into an ordinance for you all to consider at your next voting meeting? That's basically what we're asking. Is that okay?
Is that okay with folks?
And if that's the case, you could add council members' names as sponsors. Go into an agenda.
Correct.
Yeah, Barbara?
I'd like to be on the Minority Business Council.
Yeah, I would, too. Okay, Barbara?
When we vote, in the past, we have been able to indicate that we were not voting for certain issues, or will it be an all or nothing vote?
Well, I think that would be up to the body. You know, I'm not going to, I'm not going to manage this.
Can I just point out, I guess, maybe a couple of things on that? One, the charter amendments that are included in the legislative package will have to be voted on separately, is my understanding. I think Dana's going to come up here and rescue me a little bit. And then I would imagine that if there are individual items in the legislative agenda that you wanted to pull out, that that would be something that would be possible.
Okay. So your policy has the charter amendments voted on separately, and then it also states that for any of the other items in your legislative agenda, much like your consent agenda, any single council member can ask that it be pulled from the group and addressed individually, spoken to individually. So you have that right as a member.
I think that would be the best way to do it.
So they will all be together unless somebody asks for a specific item to be pulled, and if that happens, then you would still have a vote on everything else in one vote, not including, not including charter amendments. And then you would have separate votes on the ones that were asked to be individually voted on.
Very, like the consent agenda.
Just like the consent agenda.
Okay. Okay, anything else? Tell you what, good job on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, members.
All right, next up.
Mr. Mayor. At this time, LJ Hansen, our Public Works Director of the City Council, as it relates to an update regarding next steps to getting our staff back at the municipal complex.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. As the presentation is brought up, I want to thank a lot of people who have been working to help, one, put the presentation together, but really, the, the great overall effort that has been going on since May of 2019 as it relates to this project and the folks that were impacted. So we're going to talk a little bit about the buildings, we're going to talk about some 2024 milestones that we have coming up, and then a little bit about the people that are impacted with the buildings and, and who, who they are. First off, starting off with 2024 milestones, there's a number of things that are actually going to happen in the upcoming year. In January, the dedication ceremony for the Police Administration Building will, will be one of the first things to happen. Of course, in May, that will be a five-year anniversary of the May 31st events. Summer, early fall, we're expecting planning, planning, community development, and public utilities to relocate from their positions off, off-campus into Building 3, which is the former building, one at the old City Hall. September, the VB Strong Center contract will conclude, and then we're hoping September, the VB Strong Center contract will conclude, and then we're hoping that at some point next year, we'll have some type of a memorial site dedication. Now, one thing I would like to point out about my presentation, my presentation, I'm the Director of Public Works, I'm going to talk about technical things as it relates to the buildings. There is a host of work that is being done by the volunteers, by media. I believe that Tiffany Russell will be back in December to talk about some of the more thoughtful aspects and approaches to reorienting staff on campus. So that'll be a much more involved process, talking about that part of the, about the relocation. My comments today really are located or centered around the buildings themselves. And to that end, in the buildings, the original contract was originally identified as Buildings One, Two, and Eleven. Of course, since this building has been reconstructed, since this building is finished, this is now Building One, so we've renamed the program Building Two, Three, and Eleven, Three being the old Building One. That contract was let in 2021, and renovations began on Building Two shortly thereafter. Renovations on Building Three followed the relocation into this building in August of 2022. The contract value has gone up by about 17 and a half percent. And if we consider the years that this contract has been underway, on the whole, I think that's pretty good. We've seen, we've certainly seen a lot more growth in some of our other programs, and so we're grateful. Grateful, maybe it's not the best term, but we're at least pleasantly surprised that 17 and a half percent is all that we've seen thus far to date. Now, we haven't got to Building Eleven yet. We anticipate that there will be some changes, and we'll talk more about that as we get to the CIP this year. With regard to schedule, 15 months have been added to the Building Two schedule. A lot of that had to do with the fact that it had the IT center located in the basement, had to be relocated to the third floor, and there were a number of power requirements. And of course, as you recall, we had a number of issues as it relates to availability of materials and that type of thing. Building Three, the schedule slipped by about six and a half months, not unreasonable given the scope. There were a number of things that we discovered once we started taking walls out and that type of thing. I have some cool pictures coming up here. Good to see. So the Police Administration Building, this is the Building Two, former home, or the future home, I should say, for the Police Administration, the first police precinct and the city's IT data center. And as I mentioned, the IT data center has been relocated in there. In August, IT completed the relocation of the data center, and that was quite a feat. It took a lot of, took a lot of work. It took a lot of coordination between multiple centers. We had to make sure that the city didn't go down. There was some very tenuous relationships with power and making sure that everything stayed up, and I think on the whole, they did a great job. We're very pleased. Also, in August of 2023, basement renovation started. So as much as you've toured through that building and seen and how everything is done, the basement is still lags a little bit behind. And again, I have a couple of pictures here coming up. October, November, right about now, we're starting to see some furniture that's going in. December, the next couple lines look a little bit confusing. December 2023 is the anticipated substantial completion. That's for most of the building, but when you get to the basement, the substantial completion actually occurs in January with completion, final completion for the rest of the building. And we're anticipating that we'll have the Police Department start moving in December 23. Again, these dates are our best estimates. We're anticipating that all of these things are going to go as they're expected to go, but it is always possible that something could slip. Just a couple of pictures. This is the current Police Administration Building status. I took these earlier this week, so this is about as current as it gets. If you look in the upper left, you can see that we have the racks going in for file management. You can see carpet finish, and all of those features are in place. We also have some IT elements that are going in on the upper right. But if you look at the lower center, that's the basement status. You can see there's still a lot of work underway. There's still some drywall work, a lot of electrical HVAC and some other things that are going on. On whole, we feel confident with the schedule, but always have to give just a little bit of a caveat, give ourselves a little bit of an out because things can and do happen. All right, Building Three, this is the future home of public utilities, planning, and community development. In August of 2022, as I mentioned, that's when renovations began. We're anticipating substantial completion in July of 2024, and in August of 2024, we're anticipating final completion with folks being relocated back at that time. Now, the folks that are slated to go into Building Three are currently located at Saber Street and also in Reflections, Reflections being public utility, Saber being planning and community development. And this is the current status as it sits again this week. The picture on the upper left, that's actually where City Council chambers used to exist. Doesn't look at all the same anymore. The picture in the upper right, that is the entrance way as you come in through the main doors at ground level. And the one in the bottom included, because I thought it was very helpful for you all to recognize exactly the level of work that's going in. If you see that large air duct, that's a huge change to what the HVAC used to look like in that building. I know in our experiences, we oftentimes had some issues with moisture and those types of things. We do not anticipate anything like that in the future. So it's a high quality of work that's going in, and I think it'll serve the employees there, just as this building serves the employees here. Building Eleven, this is the current Police Administration Building. I don't have any cool pictures for you. The Police Department doesn't want me walking around inside taking pictures. But it is the future home for public works and a portion of information technology. And public works, that's my office, as well as the offices that are located on Saber. We have some folks that are located at Dam Neck that will all be relocating to that building. On top of which, we do have some IT folks that'll be going there as well. We're anticipating substantial completion in February 2025. If you notice, there's no anticipated start date because that's going to follow when police are completely moved from Building Eleven into their current, into the future Police Administration Building. So we really can't start anything until that move is complete. But at this point, we're anticipating substantial completion around February and March timeframe, with a hopeful move in probably midsummer of 2025. I also wanted to talk just a little bit about the people, a little bit about stakeholder engagement. Relocating into the Municipal Center Complex, of course, we have the Police Department Administration and Precinct One, they'll all be going into the Police Administration Building. And then, as I mentioned, returning to the Municipal Center would be IT, planning, community development, public utilities, public works. And on total, it's about 450 employees moving back, of which 250 of those are May 31st survivors and first responders. It makes it very difficult to track who have actually were in those departments and then switched departments since, but that 250 number, we think, is a pretty good estimate. There's probably a few that are, a few more than that that would have swapped. And then also just a little bit, wanted to let you know, and again, I believe that Tiffany will talk a little bit more about some of this in her presentation. But in order to support folks that are making this transition, we have a number of things that are in place and to help them making the transition back to campus. And one of those is the Integration Support Team, or the IST. That was formed to support members relocating to Building Three and Eleven and ensure that they have the information that they need to know about it, that they're aware of the safety measures that are being put in place to help them find and feel secure in their new space, to provide them with the time and to process and understand exactly what it is that they need. On top of which, there are resources, mental health professionals and the like, to offer skills and tools to be able to make this adjustment. It's important to know that we're not just bringing folks back and putting them into the space. A lot of work has been done on the department, the Volunteers Department with media. A lot of outreach has been done through liaisons in each of the individual departments to help folks have an understanding of what they are. A number of tours have been ongoing, and we will continue to do what we can to support. Again, that is really probably information better delivered by the Volunteers Office or by media, but I just wanted to let you know that we are considering that, even though we're talking about the buildings today. A little bit more about the IST, that's city staff from 12 departments to include support from outside mental health professionals, social workers from the VB Strong Center, and support from the Commonwealth Office for Victims of Crime. Everything the IST does is in consultation with the members that were formerly housed at Building Two. And I think that's my last slide, and with that, I'll take any questions that you have.
Okay, any questions? Amelia?
This is just a comment to thank you for the thoughtfulness and empathy that's gone into this, because it's so easy for people to have flashbacks, like aware of safety and security measures, for them to be aware, feeling secure in a new space. That's humanity. So thank you for including those in here.
Thank you for recognizing that, ma'am.
Anybody else? Tremendous amount of work, tremendous amount of challenges, outstanding job. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, Director Tiffany Russell and Director Emily LeBeau is going to come and give council an update on an idea that you all discussed that ended up as part of your focus action plan regarding finding a different way to market and identify the new council districts.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Thanks for having Tiffany and I today. We have a creative brainstorming afternoon presentation for you, and it really has come out of, like the mayor said and the city manager, this was an initiative out of your council retreat, and it was to conduct a community engagement process to identify some district identifiers, to create a sense of place for each of the districts. And from our research, we found that this effort has multiple outcomes. It creates a sense of place for those folks in each of the districts, community pride, highlighting the why they love their neighborhood, why they love the area that they live in. It can enhance social cohesion. We're going to talk later about an engagement, community engagement process. It provides an opportunity to tell the story of each of the districts. There is so much history in Virginia Beach and cultural diversity, so it's an opportunity to really highlight all that Virginia Beach and the districts have to offer.
I'm going to jump in and show you the actual data. So this slide looks at the 2022 resident survey, and the question that was posed was to better understand your sense of attachment to and pride in your neighborhood and community. So the bar at the top reflects really positive results. I want to make sure our community sees that. 81%, excellent, good, also positive pride in their neighborhood and their community. And when we're thinking about a campaign or initiative like this, we're looking for, we're diving into the cross-tab data, and I've broken this out for you by district. So you can really see where I think the best opportunity to make a positive change and a big impact is in the responses where residents were neutral on this topic. They were neither for or against, they're just right there in the middle, and we want to bump them up into the good and excellent categories. And this is through this initiative, this will be just one way we can do that over time. And then when this question is posed again to our residents in late fall 2024, when the survey is conducted again, they'll ask, we'll see the same question posed, and then we'll get the results in 2025 to see how that needle has moved. Again, with any communications plan, partnership with cultural affairs, we're really looking to make sure we can show direct attribution by the work, the resources that are going to go into this initiative, and hopefully make a difference and get that data result. So that being said, there are some things that we want to make sure we repeat. There's a lot of situational awareness, facts, and background. For those who are new to our community who are watching online, prior to the 10-1 election system, the districts were named, like the Rose Hall District. I know, Vice Mayor, this was something that you brought up right away that was very passionate. So we're really excited to see that this is coming to fruition, because I know this was an idea that you had in terms of marketing the city and creating that sense of community pride. So now we have these boundaries. We do know that the new boundaries don't necessarily align with geographic boundaries, and the names of the districts in the past did have, a lot of them did have some geographic references. We know of at least 13 neighborhoods that we will be engaging with that have two districts within their neighborhood. So we want to be sensitive to that and just know that upfront as we go into planning. We also noticed in the Spring 2023 Election System Survey, 93% of the respondents, and this is a survey that University of Virginia conducted, 93% of the residents knew or know that we have a 10-1 system, but 22% reported that they didn't know their district number. And the University of Virginia, when they came back with their findings, as our consultant, they did recommend ongoing education. This is where I think this item in your focus action plan serves those dual purposes. Let's create a campaign that can help educate our residents, not only by participating in this, but they'll know their district number, and maybe by tying the district name and the district number together, that could lead to stronger recall. This is really important, especially because voting ballots don't use district names. It'll just be the district number. And I mentioned already about the next resident survey, to be able to gauge any impact from this effort, will be in late 2024.
This initiative really serves multiple goals that you have developed. It drives public participation, which we know is very important to you. We're in engagement time with the comp plan and a lot of other plans under development. It also speaks to engaging residents in arts and heritage, cultural experiences that will touch on later. And we're going to propose maybe a plan for a final design of incorporating all the districts into one city, one cohesive pattern and look. Tiffany has shared this slide with you before. It outlines the levels of community engagement and collaboration that we are seeking. So some brainstorming to give to you. The overall idea is to really embrace public input and provide a sense of involvement and collaboration with the residents of each of your districts. We would then first educate, have this be an opportunity to educate the, each of the districts on all the wonderful things that they have in terms of icons and history. And then we would plan these design charrettes, and we would look to our city architect and placemaking expert, Darryl Henderson. I also wanted to give an introduction to our new public art and placemaking coordinator, Emily Brookover, that just started. So these design charrettes really could have an opportunity to have some small group discussion facilitated and asking question like, what inspires you and what makes you proud of your neighborhood, your surroundings? What is, if someone's moving into the area, why would you tell them to move to your neighborhood? And then, of course, suggestions on the district name. We could also provide toolkits for neighborhoods to do these facilitated discussions on their own, and then also have an online survey presence on Speak Up VB to create some more So as our small group was looking at possible district identifiers, we ran into some really good inspiration, one being in Paris, France, all the way to locally, we have two artists. The one on the top right is Cassie Wrangle, who is a local artist. This is a rendering of more of a citywide visual, but... She does Thirteen Winks is her company, and she is Virginia Beach-based. She has, now has eighty different city sketches that she sells in a hundred stores throughout the country. But this is one she's already done with Chick's Beach, just to give you an example. I mean, these, this is just inspiration where we would take the public engagement process to then have the artist create something visual that you could use. She offers iPhone cases, she offers note cards, a variety of things where you can really communicate that sense of pride for your district.
In addition to working with artists, which we love to support, certainly through cultural affairs, we wanted to think of something that you could use in your district when you're having your community events, your fall festivals, or maybe when we think about community pride, we thought about neighborhood parades, whether this is those Fourth of July parades in the neighborhoods, all the way to our holiday parade or the Neptune Festival parade. So with this concept we're proposing, producing these inflatable sphere holiday balloons. And once we have the results of all the engagement, we would create ten of these parade inflatables representing all the districts, and then we can use those throughout the year to kind of circle back with our residents to show their work, their input into a really fun activation that is very social media friendly. I can see a lot of kids and families wanting to take their photo with this, or just being able to identify a place where they can come and engage with the city. That is an unbudgeted request, so we'll talk about that in a minute. Obviously, the free things. Let's start with what we will obviously do. Once the names are selected for each district, we'll start incorporating those into the agendas like we used to do. We'll also be able to integrate the district name, the visual identity into your promotional items that the communications department produces for your community meetings and town halls. We can have pull-up banners, again with these icons, these renderings, really showing the heart of your district and the things that make that district unique and great when they, when residents are going to city events to interact with you, their elected officials or city staff. So how are we going to get the word out? We obviously have a lot of tools and resources to do that. I wanted to bring up an opportunity for direct mail. This was something we did do as part of the redistricting campaign leading into the polls. This was a request by council at the time to provide a mailer that residents could see what their district number was, and we did that. And direct mail is a great opportunity where we can customize by resident address with that exact number. I also want to bring up another focused action plan item that you've asked us to do is really to dive into the resident survey to understand how residents want to communicate with the city, what their preferences are for how they want to hear from the city. Surprisingly, direct mail ranked almost as high as Facebook. It was the number four item or their preference in receiving city information and news in their top ten. So direct mail is expensive. I'm not going to lie, that's a big expense. This would be an unbudgeted expense, but for this campaign, we could use this tactic again. This could be something we could look for in next year's budget cycle, but this is an example, a creative concept of what that mailer could look like. We would be able to translate it. In this rendering that our graphic designer put together, this is actually the outline of District Five itself, the geographic boundaries, and it's just, it's bright, it's visual, it's reminding people, you're in District Five. We want you to have community pride in your district. It ties back to the resident survey. Here's how you can participate. We need a new name. So there's a lot of things. I'd love to hear your initial thoughts. It's always fun to present creative and ideas, because I'd really like to understand more when you would like this particular focused action item to be completed. What kind of engagement do you expect, or what would be ideal for you? And some of the ideas, if you think they're terrible, that's okay. I have a lot of ideas all the time that just go into a drawer, or maybe you think, no, I really went a different direction. I'd love to hear that feedback, too. From a timeline perspective, I think this is the most important, because the focused action plan is a two-year focused action plan, but from a timing standpoint, it might make a lot of sense to start this particular activation sooner rather than later. I do want to note, we do have several community engagement activities going. Obviously, the comp plan is a big one. The master transportation plan will be in January after the holidays. We'll start to get into budget season with public engagement in April and May. And then if we do a parks referendum, there'll be a lot of education outreach engagement on that through probably spring, summer, fall. So for us...
Hey, Rosemary, then Michael.
Well, as usual, you've put your creative minds to work, and we're so proud of all that you do, and you've done an amazing job. And I like this sense of place and being excited about where you live. It's really, really wonderful. I would like to see if we could push it up sooner. I mean, I think sooner that we can, it's like you've had a baby, and the baby's, well, that's baby number twenty-two over there.
Oh, that poor mother.
I think the baby needs a name, and we could start on something with, you know, get people, it's to engage the schools and have the children involved and...
Absolutely.
Coming up with names and things like that. I think that's really important, is to involve the youth. But I think you're doing just a really great job, and I still kind of like the idea of the contest of name your district, but I would like to see the schools involved and like for us to do it as early as we can figure out we can do it.
We can definitely, through Speak Up VB and this exercise, narrow down to some top choices, and whether you choose to select the name of your district yourself, and you have choices, or if you want to crowdsource that and top vote wins, those are some things we can finalize once we build this out a little further. And that kind of goes back to the level of engagement. Do you want to turn this over completely to neighborhood school? You decide, you tell us what you want? Or we can involve and collaborate with them, which is a little bit different, where we're just asking for their input, and ultimately you, as council members, make the decision. So that would be something worth thinking about, how you want to be a part of this selection process.
I think if we can be part of it, it would be great. I think the council needs to make the decision at the end of the day, but any way that we can involve the council members in their district and doing this. I mean, people really like the idea. They think it's fun, because they really don't like the numbers. So we have a lot of things that are not so fun that we deal with, but I think this would be a fun activity.
This is a lot of fun. I agree.
Michael and then Barbara.
Thank you. Well, I remember Vice Mayor Wilson bringing up this topic a long time ago. I mean, one or maybe two years ago, about naming the districts and creating an identity and involving the community. And I thought it was a good idea, a good idea then, and I still think it's a good idea. And I think you've really obviously put a lot of thought and consideration into that process and into the values associated with engaging the members of each district, you know, around a sense of neighborhood pride and community pride, and ultimately culminating with the city pride. So I think it's really, really good, and I think it's really important. Since you asked and the topic of the name came up, I don't know what that process looks like, whether it's a school contest or, you know, another type of survey or activity for each district, but I think we do need to move on that, because there's an election coming up next year, and I do think people would like to know, you know, what their district is, and I agree with you, that's a great learning tool. So I think time is of the essence with this project, and I hope we can move forward expeditiously. I don't know what the process exactly should be, whether it's the schools, and I do think that council members should have some, you know, particular way of leaning into that conversation. I don't know, because I don't necessarily think they should be the final, you know, or maybe it's the body's decision, you know, what they, what they are, but I think that makes a lot of sense. And I do have a question about the balloon. Can you make one that looks like Mount Trashmore?
For that district, I'm sure we can come up with something. In fact, I think the artist that Emily referenced already has a Mount Trashmore.
Oh, they do?
So we really like her, and Cultural Affairs has worked with her before. That concept, so, and to be clear, so really getting input on the direct mail piece and the parade balloons are unbudgeted, so, and from a timing standpoint, that would mean I would need to, Patrick, I don't know how you want me to handle that, because it's not funded.
We can do this, and it's probably, I think Tiffany's asking for about $150,000 in money to kind of, ninety-five to do the, ninety-five thousand to do the mailer, and then about another fifty-five to do a celebration at the end of this, but also some paid media and other things as well. We could probably address that through vacancy savings or use a reserve for contingency, you know, so we'll probably look to bring, if you all are okay with it, we'll probably look to bring something to you all, either the fourteenth or the twenty-first, for you all to redirect some budget resources for us to do this work.
Hey, Barbara, then Amelia.
You touched on it somewhat, because I will be having my monthly district forum this week, and this is not a topic I've discussed with them, because I didn't know we were moving ahead, and that's going to be one of the first questions is, how much is it going to cost? And I think civic engagement, although I'm not sure what that really means anymore, is going to be an important part of it, if we're going to listen to what the citizens have to say. And so I think we kind of need a framework, maybe you apply to just what this is going to be, but I'm thinking in terms of District Two, being a very large geographic district with many different areas, I don't know how we would come to one look at a district that large, from Sandbridge to Stumpy Lake or Salem Road and North Salem and everything in between. So I think it's going to be a different issue, and right now, I don't think my district is going to be much one to participate, but anyway, we'll try.
Okay, Amelia?
I think the ideas you have are really great, featuring my district, which looks like a stealth plane. So you have that southern part that has more historic, and you have the upper part that has town center. So I see it as an opportunity for those two completely unique sections to get to know each other, especially with the balloons. I don't know about the parades, starting all the way from Burton Station and ending up at Town Center, but just the idea that you have, the direct mail is very important, because not everybody has access to technology, especially, you know, in parts of my district, but they will look at that mailer. So I would like to push for that, and for the celebration and the name, the sooner the better. Thank you.
Hey, anybody else, Chris?
Thank you for the presentation. It looks good, it sounds good, but I'm a little concerned about the budget. Last week, I brought up to the council an opportunity to engage community, and we were concerned about spending more than $50. And so my question is, you know, what budget is there with this type of program for each district to actually then go out as council members and provide opportunities for our district residents to, as it's laid out here, engage in meaningful arts, heritage, and cultural experience? Because the truth be told, all of those type of engagements would probably cost more than $50, and I'm not sure we have the public venues in each district to engage. If we're looking at, let's say, arts and culture, the best place for that in District Eight might not be Great Neck Rec Center. So if I had to go find a cultural venue, we've indicated as a policy that we don't really want to spend more than $50. Secondly, the $95,000 for the district mailers?
Direct mailers.
I don't know if that's necessarily appropriate with several districts not up for election this time. It could be confusing. I know there's confusion last time where the mailers were sent out, and then people showed up to the polls, and they couldn't vote for anyone, because they didn't know that there were just certain districts up. So I'd like to see kind of a little bit more granular, what is the strategy? Because if someone gets a mailer in District Eight, they may think they're going to be voting for someone in District Eight next November, and that's not the reality. And so what's kind of the overall message? Because we don't want to cause additional confusion. And I remember you came to us saying that there was some confusion. People were just seeing mailers, numbers, they showed up, and then they couldn't vote. And so several concerns for me is the budget. If we're going to really go at this, maybe as a policy, we need to determine a budget for each district so that we can actually go out and engage our communities with events. Otherwise, you all are going to be really busy if this is just kind of wide open and we can throw things at the wall, per se. So thank you. Great brainstorming, great creativity, but ultimately, we still have to count the costs. Thank you.
Yeah, Worth?
Thank you, Mayor, and I also agree, this is a great, thank you for the presentation and great ideas, but also, I have to weigh personally in my, in my district and citywide versus other needs that we are being asked by the citizens. It could be parks and recreation, it could be schools, it could be public safety. They're going to be asking us, you know, is this worth? And I know $50,000 or ninety-five or $150,000 is not a whole lot. At the same time, there are a lot of needs out there. So I think we ought to weigh the cost of this versus the value. There's a lot of values, no question about it, but I just worry about the budget as well.
Yeah, if I can just jump in here real quick, yeah, we got a new system out here, okay? And it's, once again, it's in its infancy. And, you know, being out and about, a lot of people are not sure what district they live in. You know, the old Centerville district is now District One and District Seven, and, you know, what are the boundaries? What's going on? Where's the voting places and who's up? And, you know, the thing is, once again, I think as part of an education system, you know, letting our folks know, you know, where they are right now, even though it might, they might be off cycle for an election thing, I think it's important to know what district that they park in. So I think there is value about getting it out and, you know, getting it, that we stirring the pot on things like that. And, you know, I think it's a great concept, and, you know, once again, I think each district, I'm the only one in District One left at the table these days, and the thing is, our big iconic thing, believe it or not, is Stumpy Lake. I mean, you know, that would give an identity of a location, you know, to people, just as an example. And the other thing is, too, a number of us mayors went to Germany, you know, looking at apprentice programs, and in a lot of German towns and villages, they have like an iconic statue artwork that really kind of defines what they're going on. When I was in our sister city, Woblinger, they have a magnificent piece of art, and, you know, this goes along with Michael Belucci's thing about, you know, bringing art into it, you know, maybe to, you know, every district has, you know, a park that's well-attended. You know, maybe perhaps put a piece of art or something there that is an identity for that district. But I think the ideas are out there, but once again, I think, you know, let's see if we can get this expedited. Josh, did you have something?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you very much for the... And, you know, that, I really, having been involved in a branding initiative that was a challenge to communicate for a whole lot of reasons, our regional branding initiatives, something, a takeaway for me from that exercise was, you know, top-down and quick isn't necessarily lasting sometimes, and organic, authentic, something that kind of develops over time through community is more enduring. And I really, I think that we do need this sort of thing around our council districts, where people are finding kind of commonality, renewed commonality and identity. I don't know about rushing it, though. And... And I think, I think if we do have these other opportunities coming up, where we're going to be in front of people on account plan and all the other things we're going to be going out and talking about, I think we've got some opportunities perhaps to plant some seeds there that we're thinking in this direction. But maybe we need to hear from people a little bit more before we go all out with something like this. Even though I do, I do think that something along these lines is certainly worthwhile. I just, we've got opportunities to get in front of people. I think we should use those opportunities to help better shape something that people could get behind. And I don't know how District Nine is going to be called anything other than Bayside. So I guess I'm kind of biased in this situation. But although I know where Bayside includes District Four as well. So, but anyway, I just, I agree, I agree with where we were going with this. But I just think slow, authentic and purposeful would be a better approach.
Hey, Amelia.
Well, I would just like to say that you already have started this process. When we look at this page where you've been out and brought some information back to us, that could be a good starting point. And whether we like it or not, every year we have elections in Virginia, every year. So whether we want that to stop us from moving forward with what we want to do, that education is very, very important. And at least the way you're looking at it is through culture, through art, something that's digestible. So I think this, you know, this is important when we not get to the end, but at least getting it moving. And maybe we can look, City Manager, at what is the most, you know, efficient way we may not do all at once. But at least as a start, just like we did with the ocean front, where you have the balls going from one part to the other, those are showing connections. And that's what we need. Like in my district, I have a higher percentage of African Americans and a higher percentage of Hispanics. So of course we'll put something in the Spanish or whatever. But they need that connection to the rest of our entire city. And this begins to make people think about it. And you have many routes that you can do, you know, to get us started.
Makes me think about the nostalgic VB series. Where we celebrated every five years. We, that took a year. That was Councilmember Henley's idea. It had so much engagement. It was thoughtful, we had time. This exercise, similarly, we would be working with the Library Municipal Reference Team to uncover those hidden gems and stories and history about what's within these geographic boundaries. I just want to make sure if we go that route, which we can do, we would love to have time. But also know, like you said, there are elections, there are some other things coming up. And we're also sensitive to overwhelming the community with, you know, five or six input things all at the same time. But, you know, we were trying to look for efficiencies there too, to cross promote all of those opportunities at once, so.
Yeah, you're taking it one step at a time. My big word here, community pride.
Hey, Sabrina.
So in terms of this idea, I think that it certainly is a good idea. I would certainly, looking at District Seven, I don't, I don't recall the citizens in District Seven saying that this is a huge priority because there are several other needs. And in terms of the budget, I do want to be mindful because there are a lot of other priorities. And this is a good idea. Certainly something that can be needful and necessary. But it's the timing, it's when you do it. I don't think we have to rush through the process. Certainly not opposed to getting the process started. But I think in looking at all of the other concerns and priorities throughout the city, I have to be mindful and considerate that the needs of the citizens, the priorities, and the cost of doing something like this. Those are my thoughts.
Hey, Rosemary.
I've enjoyed listening to everyone around the table. And I think really, there's no one who disagrees that it needs, we need to do it. It's how we do it. And it's going to be a process. It's no matter if we start it now or if we start it six months from now, it's still going to take time. So I would like to see us go ahead and get things started because it's going to take time to do all of this and to get the public engagement. This is not a one and done. So, yeah, I'd like for us to get started. Really appreciate your ideas and the comments of the council members.
I can take the feedback that I've heard today and put together in collaboration with Cultural Affairs a more detailed communications plan based on that feedback and present that to you in a Friday packet for discussion. And I think what I'm hearing is maybe some of the budget items because of the other priorities y'all do have, and I totally understand that. That could be something I can put into my FY '25 budget request. And if that ends up being something we can move forward, we still have time to do that. There's a lot of things we can do right now and take advantage of some of the other community engagement efforts and town halls that you have to get started.
Okay, anybody have a problem with that? Okay, thanks so much. Appreciate it. Good conversation.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, members of our planning department will come and brief City Council on the pending planning items that are coming to you for November 14th and November 21st.
All right, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I'm here this afternoon to provide an overview of the planning items for consideration at your November 14th and November 21st City Council hearings. So for November 14th, there are a total of 12 items scheduled for consideration. Item one is a street closure request for an unimproved alley between 54th and 55th Street in the north end. More specifically, the applicants are seeking to close a 750 square foot portion of an unimproved 15-foot alleyway between their properties. The closure area will be divided between property owners of Lot 21 and Lot 12B. The owner of Lot 12, Unit A, has requests or has informed us that they have no interest in the closed area. A viewers' meeting was held on August 25th, during which it was determined that the proposed closure would not result in any public inconvenience with the recommended conditions that staff has provided in the report. Due to existing overhead power lines within the alleyway, staff has recommended a condition requiring the applicants to work with Dominion Energy to provide an easement satisfactory to Dominion for those overhead power lines. Staff is unaware of any opposition to the request and the Planning Commission did recommend approval on their consent agenda. Item two is a modification of conditions request for the Bonnie Bright Borrow Pit off of Princess Anne Road near the North Carolina Line. The applicant recently purchased an additional 13.9 acres adjacent to the current mining operations and intends to add this area to the conditional use permit and to that area shown in blue there. And that's what is requiring the modification of conditions. The original CUP was approved by council in 1989 in order to operate a 23.4 acre borrow pit. Since that time, several modifications to the CUP have been granted, both to expand the borrow pit operations, which now exceeds 150 acres, and to extend the time allotted for excavation and the ultimate restoration of the site. And that is currently slated as of now for 2030. When reviewing this application, staff did reach out to Virginia Department of Mines, Mineral and Energy, who did indicate that the borrow pit has been operating in accordance with state regulations, and they had no concerns with the proposed expansion. There has also been continual monitoring of the groundwater and there is no evidence of any impacts to either the drinking water or salt intrusion into the aquifer. The hours of operation are proposed to remain unchanged and staff has not received any opposition to the request. And again, the Planning Commission voted unanimously in favor of the application at their October hearing. Item three is a modification of conditions request for property located at the southeast corner of North Lynn Haven Road and Virginia Beach Boulevard. The site is zoned B2 and lies within the Lynn Haven SGA. More specifically, the applicant is requesting a modification of conditions to revise the conceptual site plan, landscape plan, building elevations for the dealership. The property is nearly three acres and is zoned B2 and has been operating as a dealership since the early 1970s. The applicant is seeking to redevelop the site to include demolition of the existing showroom and buildings on the western portion of the property, to then construct a new 32,000 square foot showroom and then adding additional landscaping, proposing to shift the location of the access point on Yorktown Avenue and then doing some additional landscaping and plazas along Virginia Beach Boulevard at the corner of the site. The total parking on the site does exceed the parking requirement and that includes both the display spaces as well as customer parking by a total of 18 spaces. So as seen on the screen here, you can see the proposed elevations as well as the renderings for the 12-foot monument sign proposed to be placed along Virginia Beach Boulevard. I will point out that the proposed building is a max height of 30 feet, as shown. As I already mentioned, they have included some additional landscaping and plazas along Virginia Beach Boulevard and are pulling the building closer to the Boulevard from what exists today, just to try to better align with the recommendations of the Lynn Haven SGA plan. Staff has not received any opposition to the request and the Planning Commission did vote unanimously to recommend approval of the application. Items four and five are a modification of proffers and a conditional use permit request for property located at 5453 Wesleyan Drive. The applicant is requesting to redevelop an out parcel of the Wesleyan Commons Shopping Center to include a new 2,200 square foot car wash facility. When the site was conditionally rezoned back in 1998, car wash uses were excluded from the permitted uses that were allowed with that rezoning. So the applicant is now coming back to request a modification of proffers to allow that use. Sam?
Trying to place it. Remember where the old Sonic?
I believe so, and I know it came before.
Whoops.
There we go.
Okay.
This came before council last year and it was a proposed Little Caesars. And then that developer chose not to move forward with that proposal. So there's a new purchaser who's wanting to do the car wash facility. But I can double check that and get back with you.
But where Little Caesars?
It was a proposed Little Caesars, it was never developed. But I'll, I'll double check if that is the proximity to Food Lion and Sonic. Can follow up with you.
Because there is where Sonic?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, it is. Yes, the site is the existing Sonic that is closed.
All right, that's fine. Thank you.
No problem. Okay, the current request is also looking to modify the proffered conceptual plan and landscape plan that was included with that approval from 2022. The proposed design, which is shown on the screen here, is consistent with the look and design of the shopping center overall and does complement the general area. Staff, again, has not received any opposition to this request and the Planning Commission did vote unanimously in favor of this item on their consent agenda at their October hearing. Item six is a CUP request for an indoor recreational facility located at 2336 Elson Green Avenue. The applicant intends to operate a planet fitness within a vacant space in the existing building. The applicant intends to use a portion of the first floor and the entirety of the second floor for this new fitness facility. The facility will open at 5:00 a.m. on Mondays and will remain open until 9:00 p.m. on Fridays. And then weekend hours are proposed to be 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. A total of 20 employees are anticipated for the facility. With the exception of new wall signage, no exterior changes are proposed to the building. I do want to point out that the wall signage, as currently shown, does exceed the maximum allowance required in the zoning ordinance. So it is the applicant's intent to seek a Board of Zoning Appeals variance to allow for the greater signage. But staff has recommended condition four to either require that signage to meet the zoning ordinance unless that variance is granted by the Board of Zoning Appeals. Staff has not received any opposition to the request and the item was approved, recommended for approval on the consent agenda. Items seven through 10 are CUP requests for short-term rentals. This is for property located at 30734th Street. So it's the applicant's intent to demolish the existing dwelling on the site and in its place, construct a quadplex, the site plan for which was recently approved by our Development Services Center. Each of the four units proposed will be three bedrooms and the applicant is requesting a short-term rental for each of the four units. A total of 12 parking spaces are required, which is one per bedroom for the four units proposed. A total of 10 parking spaces are provided on-site and the applicant intends to lease two additional spaces off-site in the 31st Street garage. And that is located within the quarter of mile required by our zoning division.
Is this property in the permitted?
Yes, sir. Staff has not received any opposition to this request. And again, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the application on their consent agenda. Item 11 is a conditional use permit request for a short-term rental at 921 Pacific Avenue, Unit B. This is within the Pacific Place condominiums. This request is for a one-bedroom unit within the condominiums. It has been previously utilized as a short-term rental. However, upon being notified of the CUP requirement, the owner did cease all operations for the short-term rental use and filed their application with the planning department. And there has not been any violations since that time. One parking space is required for the unit, which is provided on-site. Staff has not received any opposition to the request and the Planning Commission recommended approval on their consent agenda. And this just shows, to date, so far, there are 19 approved STRs within the Pacific Place condos. The final item on your November 14th agenda is another CUP request for an STR, this one at 52322nd Street. This request is for a four-bedroom unit. The property, again, was previously cited for use as an STR without the required permit. However, they have ceased operations and did get their CUP application in. A total of four parking spaces are required, two of which are provided on-site and the remaining two will be leased from the 25th Street parking garage. And again, that lies within the quarter-mile distance from the subject property. Staff has received three letters of support for the STR use and is unaware of any opposition to the request. And the Planning Commission, again, recommended approval on their consent agenda.
Barbara.
This is the last one. Am I looking at the right one when it says that he rented as long ago as September?
Yes, ma'am.
And now he's in compliance, so what's he doing?
They have pulled that listing down from the Airbnb and VRBO. So there's no ongoing listing, that it has been removed.
But there's no long-term rental either, it's just vacant at this point?
As far as I know, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, Michael. I don't have a specific question about this, but I do have something, Mrs. Henley. Actually, I'm going to save this for council comments. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah, moving on to the November 21st agenda, there's only one item for consideration. This is one that was deferred from your October 17th hearing. This is for the modification of conditions request for Wyclef Presbyterian Church at the intersection of North Great Neck Road and Millwood Road. As a quick reminder, this is a request, CUP request that was approved back in 1966 for the religious use. And the property has existed as such since. The church no longer needs about 3.8 acres of the property and intends to sell that. And as such, needs to remove that portion from the CUP request. The church will retain just over four acres, so they do meet the minimum three-acre requirement that the zoning ordinance has established for religious uses. Since the request to modify the boundaries of the original CUP meets the dimensional requirements that I just discussed, staff was in support of this request, but the Planning Commission did vote, by a vote of six to four, to recommend denial. Since your last meeting, the request was considered at the Open Space Advisory Commission meeting, just yesterday. During their meeting, several scenarios were presented to the group for potential acquisition. But the committee did vote not to recommend acquisition at this time. And Director Kirschman is here if there's any questions specific to that. It is my understanding that a staff report will be provided to City Council with more information on the Open Space Advisory Commission's decision. But if you have anything Michael can't answer related to this request? If not, that concludes my briefing, so if there are any other questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay.
Ms. Brad, thank you. Thank you for the briefing. And I, I know most of us weren't around the table when the short-term rental regulations were considered, but.
Feel lucky about that.
Yeah. And something I had mentioned, a council member, Remick, earlier today, just looking at some of these coming in here, I know I'm sure there's a reason behind the quarter-mile radius, but that seems like an awfully long way to walk. And, and these are also public garages, so I know just a couple of weeks ago, I tried to park at 31st Street in the garage, and there, there weren't very many spots. So I, I just, I wanted to throw this out there. I don't, I don't know really what there is to do about it, but it just does concern me when we've got families who are, or visitors who might not necessarily be familiar with our city coming in and having to walk quarter-mile from their parking spot to get to where they're staying.
Okay, anyone else at this point? Okay, thanks a bunch. Okay, time for council discussion and comments. Anybody? Michael?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, one of the questions that Mrs. Henley asked about short-term rentals and illegal operation of short-term rentals made me think about some communications I've had recently with residents from District Three. One of the challenges we're having is with illegally operated STRs within District Three. There have been, there have been a number that I'm aware of, and whether you're, you know, there are various perspectives on the operation of STRs and the regulations that were adopted, but everyone agrees that illegally operated STRs are nuisance and have a negative impact on our community. But one of the challenges that we've been having is when an operator who is, was not operating within the limits of the law, or registered, or all the things that are required of, of the, of an operator, doesn't reach voluntary compliance, the city is, has limitations to its enforcement mechanisms. So, for example, there's one particular case that's happening in District Three, and I think they're on their third summons, and it appears that it is cheaper for them or more cost-efficient to continue to operate illegally while the matter is, goes through the judicial system, and we are operating at the highest levels of enforcement that state law allows, and I, and I kind of wish I'd brought this up during the legislative discussion, but maybe it's not too late. I wonder if the council, or if we could get more information about how we could potentially request the state to authorize localities to use more restrictive enforcement measures on illegal STR operators, particularly those who are so-called, you know, what you might call a repeat offender. There's one particular one that just refuses to shut down, and the judicial process takes so much time, and the cost is relatively so low, that they, he just continues to, he or she continues to operate in blatant disregard of the law or of the city's enforcement mechanisms. So how do we address that?
So, and I think it's probably the same one you're talking about. We're in the process of drafting a motion, a lawsuit that would ask the court to enter injunction prohibiting that entity from continuing to operate, and then if they violate that, then there are much harsher penalties that can be employed. But right now, that's our, that's our fallback, and that, that occurs only after we've seen evidence that they basically have made a business decision to continue operating and just paying the fine. But that right now is where we are, and that's, we're in the process of doing that. And so we'll seek both a preliminary injunction and a permanent injunction, and that, that should be filed very shortly.
Well, if I could just ask a follow-up. Do you think that, you know, I'm getting repeated messages, and I understand, and I'm glad to get them from a neighbor who is very concerned, and, and she hasn't said this, but I would say disappointed in the city, and I think his understanding of our, of limitations that exist, but is that sufficient, or, or, you know, will we be, would we, would it be appropriate to, to make a case for, you know, more tools for enforcement?
That, 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 that probably goes beyond law and policy. Certainly, there are, you know, if, if, if the amount of the, this civil penalty that we could charge was greater, it might allow us to get a recalcitrant operator's attention quicker, certainly. There are probably other enforcement measures that could be made harsher that also would shorten that process. I guess it's a, I guess it's a question of finding the right balance between the harm that's being caused in the community and, and what we want, what we believe is an appropriate penalty, and that is really a, a question at the first instance, or you at, at the council level, and then at the General Assembly level. You know, we, we see when we try to take, or I don't want to, I don't want to speak for, for, for Mr. Kenzie, but we often, when we try to get, get harsher penalties or more enforcement authority in the General Assembly on STRs, we tend to get a lot of pushback, and it depends on the mood of the General Assembly in that session as to whether or not we make progress or actually lose ground. So, you know, currently, we, we have a tool that I think ultimately will work, but it does take time, and it is, I am sure, frustrating for the neighbor who sees that activity that they know to be unlawful continuing to occur.
And I'll just say the last thing, I'll keep it brief. Thank you for your time, but it is, it's a better part of a year that this has been going on. So you're, you're 100% correct, and I share your understanding of the frustration they're experiencing. It is a tool. It ultimately looks like it will work, and if we're successful, the city's successful in achieving that, that, those injunctions, but if you had to live next door to that, not you, but if any of us had to live next door to that for a year, better part of a year, it would appear to be very weak and insufficient. I do think we need to look at expanding, you know, what our, what our tools could be for enforcement reasonably. I don't think the first one should be so harsh, but if you're in blatant disregard of the city's laws and community standards and expectations around this, you know, enterprise, then we should have more options, in my view, and I think the view of my neighbors too.
Sure. Okay, anybody else? Patrick?
Listen, I'm trying to get a sense of, because staff and Mr. Berluci and other council members go through this all the time when land use issues, especially around STRs, happen in our communities. It takes months, if not sometimes a year, to get to a resolution of it because of the land use rights that individuals have. Is council wanting us to do some research and bring back something to you all for consideration for adoption in your legislative package?
Yeah, Warren?
Thank you, Mayor. So I think there are a couple of issues here. I, too, like Councilman Berluci, I'm hearing from a lot of constituents in my district, which is, has a lot of STRs, both legal and illegal. I've heard today, and I don't know if this is true or not, I won't say the number, but it's way, we have, we advertise as a city close to 2,000 or 3,000 Airbnbs or STRs, but we only have 200 or 300 registered. So you have, what are, how many are illegal, and how many should we go after, and then also enforcement of current laws and the costs associated with running this program. So I think, I believe we're going to be given a briefing in December on this topic, but Richmond does have a lot of power on this, and we do need to tread lightly on this and what we can get and what we can't get out of Richmond.
Barbara?
I've spent an awful lot of time working on STRs. I don't think they're good answers, but one of the big concerns was what can we enforce? And, and of course, we're finding out now just how difficult it is to enforce even what we did approve, and of course, we went from many different aspects of this whole thing and what was going to be allowed. Of course, we also know that the General Assembly stepped in and allowed some STRs when we were still considering it. So you really don't know where the General Assembly's going to be on all of this, and it's, it's an, it's an impossible situation to get your arms around. I just have to tell you from what we, we did, but the enforcement was one of our concerns, that we didn't want to put anything in place that we couldn't enforce, but we're finding out just really how difficult that is. I don't, that's not much encouragement, but we've, we've tried, and we just have to keep trying with this enforcement issue. But we have, we do have how many inspectors now that deal just with STRs? Or I think we allowed some in the budget.
We have three inspectors that deal with STRs, and Kathy Warren, the, the town director, is looking to see if we need additional. I, I think the big thing about it is the city isn't the sole executioner of what gets enforced, right? You know, we can stimulate the process, initiate the process, but a lot of times, we need a judge to rule on the final rendering of the discipline or the justice, and that's not something that we can do all by ourselves. So I think my team and Mark's team are doing everything in our power to move the, the hands, the hands as fast as possible, but it's not necessarily we get to ultimately make that decision. You know, so I think, Miss Henley, to your point, we are doing everything we can to enforce, but we don't make the ultimate decision on what, what happens, you know, in terms of the fines and the penalties and when people have to stop, right? We don't initially, when we say, when we give somebody an injunction or whatever, we give them a notice of violation, they don't, they don't necessarily stop unless the judge tells them to.
You know, I'm thinking, thinking about fairness of, and equity of the people that actually play by the rules.
Yeah, that's true.
And, you know, the point is, I'm a big believer in free enterprise, but I don't like a legal enterprise, and that's exactly what they're doing, and they're basically, you know, you know, thumbing their nose at us, and, you know, I, I see nothing forward to, let's see what we, what we can do to get empowered to do that. Does anybody object to the city manager's suggestion that at least they bring forward some type of perhaps punitive action that were enabled by Richmond that we can get this under control and be fair to the people playing by the rules?
It's the right thing to do.
We are making progress in this area. We are getting more efficient. I, I don't know of a lot of cases where, where people have done, like the, the, the owner in, in Mr. Berluci's district, where he just says, I'm making enough money, I can afford the fine. We had talked about it in the fa, in the past, raising that, the numbers for getting authority from Richmond to increase that fine. That is probably the most straightforward and easily explained change that, that we probably could propose. And I'm hesitant to say this, but I, I think we have to remember, when we talk about, when we talk about judges and we talk about state legislators, we see the issues that affect our citizens and that come to you. They see, you know, they see an STR case on their docket, and then they see a robbery case, and a domestic violence case, and a murder case. And so when we talk about increasing penalties and, and addressing these grave injustices, they are injustices, they are. It is unfair. It is, it is unfair that someone is following the rules and somebody is not. I, I'm just telling you that we have to have a, understand that other people who have decisions to make in this process don't necessarily see it at the same granular level that we do, and so their reaction may not always be what we expect it to be. But we can certainly propose an increase in those fines, and that's an easy, that's an easy proposal to write, if that's where the council would like us to go.
Okay, Michael, then.
I have a very simple question. If the, if the city asks for an increase in the fines, would they, would the judge or the city have jurisdiction in asking, in determining what those fines could be? So in other words, would it just provide flexibility to charge more in the cases where it was difficult to achieve compliance, so you're not really harming people too much if they're, you know, on their first warning, even their second, but in this case, it's a third and fourth? You know, it's time to get serious, and we don't have the option to get serious. So would the judge have to imply that, that a fine if we ask for a higher fine, or would they have, they have some jurisdiction, right?
We would be asking for authority to, to make the, the fine in our code higher than you would pass an ordinance that says the maximum fine is whatever that number is, and then the court would, in fact, have the discretion whether or not to order that fine. There are, there are increasing penalties for subsequent violations right now. It, it goes over from the criminal side, or from the civil side to the criminal side, and then you get into, of course, the, the injunction as well. So, so we have, we have some remedies right now, but again, the problem is, you have to walk through, you have to walk through a process, and, and that process takes, you know, because we live in a system where you're innocent until proven guilty, where you're entitled to all of these due process protections, the same thing that make it the greatest system in the world also make it sometimes a, a time-consuming system. So, yeah, to answer your question, yes, the judge still has discretion, and, and probably would exercise it to some degree.
So if I could just say, then I would support us asking for increased, you know, an option to increase it, which, you know, would just give the discretion.
Are we okay with moving forward a rosemary?
I, I support that as well. It seems like we've done that in the past, and we've asked for, but nobody was willing to carry the legislation.
I think, Brent, do you recall? I know you're, you're going back on history that you were a part of.
I was just looking through the package from last week. You'll need to put your jacket up.
We're informal, so.
But while he's coming up, we also, I thought we, we thought some kind of program for the Commissioner of Revenue to help identify the illegals.
We're using that, to be fair, I believe.
We're using that. It's basically, I think council lacks, in one of its, the package for us to be able to share information, because remember, previously, there was a wall between us and certain information they can share. I think we now can have that information. Brent's got to try to recall history, but I think there's a statement we have in your package from, in this year that we used last year. I felt like we asked that question before about the money, do they get an increase? But I don't know if we actually did that, but Brent, you can probably clarify for us.
I don't think, I don't know if it was last year, but maybe it was a couple of years ago. We asked for it before, but they were like, oh, we don't want that.
I think so.
And I just took the language from our legislative package last year in 2023 and have incorporated it into our package for 2024. That's what y'all saw today. I'm unfamiliar with prior years' attempts to include something like this, but I haven't seen it in any of the work that I've done so far.
But I, I think, Mayor, what we're hearing is, me and Mark, our teams will put their heads together and then give you all some draft language that you could incorporate, consider incorporating your legislative package for fiscal year for '24 about possibly increasing the penalty, the fees associated with the penalties of missteps as it relates to STRs.
The offenders.
Yeah. Anybody object to moving forward like that? And Mark, let me ask you, do these folks have, uh, uh, STRs have to have a business license? Okay, so if they don't have the business license, how do we know that they're actually declaring the income?
It, Mr. Mayor, I think we can get more into it, on it, it's, it's.
I know it's complicated, but I'm just thinking.
I think we're working to brief you all in November, not December, right? Either the 14th or the 21st, and my team and his team, after we, we heard about this a couple of months from you all, we've been trying to put our heads together to make sure our process from an enforcement standpoint is buttoned up before we get in front of you all, and once we brief, we'll, we'll kind of be able to layer out all those different issues to you. Yeah, but there, it's, it's, it's a complicated malaise of, of issues, you know?
And if it's okay for me to add, I'll, this is going to be a highly debated topic. And if it's okay for me to add, this is going to be a highly debated topic in the General Assembly session on both sides. We've already seen some discussions from our friends in the Realtors Association and from Airbnb on trying to move this discussion away from the localities and more at the state. So this is going to be a big topic during the General Assembly session.
Barbara?
Well, I was going to say, we don't want to lose any ground. So we've got to kind of make sure we aren't putting something out there that's going to just blow up on us.
And that's where I think the conversation will need to happen amongst council if this is something that you all want to do. I think the statement that we have in the legislative package now is a request that the General Assembly continue to keep the ability to enforce this at the local level. Yeah, and Brent, is there anything else to add to that statement? But I think that's basically what it is.
No, I mean, I think that's the, the key to the statement is maintaining that local authority to regulate and to maintain the land use. And then we added in that statement as the Commissioners of the Revenue have been floating and been talking around, around the Commonwealth. They have some real concerns about the collection of the appropriate taxes that are associated with SDRs and maintaining the local authority there as well. There's some movement to try and move all of that to the state. And there's some complications there that we're not sure that it'd be enforced as well as we can enforce it at the local level.
Okay, Amelia?
I want to mention, Councilman Remick mentioned over 2,000 and only so much. So we're losing taxes. And then you just brought up about business license. And you still have people in different neighborhoods who know that this is going on illegally, but they don't want to be the tattletale in their community or feel there will be some retribution for them, you know, bringing that up. So how are you all going about this business license process for those extras?
So we'll be able to present more about that, but when we do find them, they do get reported to the Commissioner of Revenue and they can take action to collect any kind of back payments. And we do have technology on our side and also the Commissioner of Revenue's side to identify if people are advertising SDRs that have not been approved by the city, right? You know, I think the Commissioner of Revenue, he gets into it as quickly as possible to collect the revenues owed to the public. And we get into it as quickly as possible on an enforcement standpoint. Our process just takes a long time to, to get any kind of a positive end scenario.
And some of these, you know, it's not a question of collecting taxes, it's a question of shutting them down. They're not supposed to be operating. They shouldn't be collecting any fees, therefore they shouldn't be generating any taxes. So we, we, you know, we, we've always sort of been on the, riding that double edged sword. People will tell you, you need to allow these, so you, because it's a big revenue generator. People will tell you that you've been collecting revenue based on these type of short term rentals for, for many, many years. In fact, in Sandbridge, you even have an, an increased rate down there. So, I mean, when we're looking at enforcement, we're not, the, the Commissioner of the Revenue has the tool, the same tool that we do, which is the tool that allows him to go out and find where these are being offered online. And then he can follow up and see whether or not there's actually been transient occupancy tax bait or not. And then he can take enforcement action based on that information. We now have authority for increased information sharing based on last year's requested General Assembly changes. And we have that same, same software that you authorized us to acquire. And we are using that for enforcement purposes. And I think what you'll find when we do the, the presentation to you in November is we are identifying these, these places that are operating illegally. We are sending them letters and reaching out to them and telling them they either need to stop or they need to get legal. And that's why you're seeing on every agenda, a number who are within an area where they can get legal, coming to you and getting legal. And we are getting, you know, voluntary compliance with others who just simply don't have a path to get legal. So we are, we are moving, I think, in the right direction. Is it as fast as any of us would like to go? No, it's not. Are there not, are there outlying cases that are really infuriating? Yes, there are. But we're working to, to, you know, improve our processes to, to use what we have effectively and efficiently. And I think we're, we're making great strides in that.
Thank you.
Okay, Chris, Barbara?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to get some clarity on the actual number. I've heard a few tossed out. And I'm looking at the lodging taxes for Virginia Beach 2022 as of September 13th. And when you look at the 2022 SDRs, transient VB, the number's 8,065. I, I don't know, it must be nights, but net taxable 41,563. And then transient Sandbridge, 939, which I can't imagine that's nights, 83 million. So this is a significant generator of taxes, but I don't know what, I've heard 800, I've heard 300 on the books. I'd like to actually have an idea of what's really on the books, because this report is saying something different from what I've heard today, and this is coming from staff. So love to kind of get some clarity on that. Thank you.
Barbara?
Well, not my original question, but just to comment on that, Sandbridge isn't required to get a conditional use permit, thanks to the General Assembly. So I guess we really have no way of, well, anyway, that's very different, very different animal. But in talking about enforcement, it sounds like we must be, might be using all of our resources just to get people legal in whether or not they're operating and not really looking at how they're operating. Are we also enforcing things like the noise and the parking and all of those things? Or is that just kind of going by the wayside while we're just worrying about whether they're legal or not?
We are. Yeah, so we are enforcing those things. Sometimes those are the complaints that leads us towards identifying that they're not operating legally. So we are enforcing noise. We are working towards addressing the issues about the parking that we get and things like that. So the staff does focus on addressing those.
Hey, anybody else? Okay, so we have a direction? Okay. Any other council comments at all? Amelia?
Yes, I wanted to mention two. I got to go over to the Boardwalk Art Show, which was really, I think they had over 128 or more exhibitors. And this is 60 years that this has been done. So we wanted to congratulate Mocha and its executive director, Gary Ryan, and her staff that it was very smooth, at least walking along. I had one person so nice, Markel, to escort me along and meet and greet some of the people. And I saw some of our other council members, Councilmember Berluci, Councilmember Shulman, Councilmember right over there, Chris Taylor, plus his family, and the new little one, all out there enjoying that. So that's one. The second is, we had last night the planning schools with the Betty F. Williams and Bayside Planning Meeting, which I attended. And I did jot down where we had at least some points, and I asked them just to go over it with me. But their meeting was about shared spaces along the main corridor with the unique identities for each program in their individual classroom wings, 4th and 5th graders versus 6th graders. They also discussed shared spaces allowed for additional amenities for both schools, such as congregational areas from dining areas that can open up to a stage. Opportunities for project-based learning for all grade levels, as well as indoor/outdoor learning environments. And one thing our citizens can follow these processes by visiting www.vbschoolsofthefuture.com. And one thing, a ballot that we're very mindful about costs. Even mentioned if they went over cost, they'll be looking at different federal grants to accommodate what there was. And everyone's excited of the process that we're doing to, you know, escalate this instead of it being so many years in the future. So those are two things I wanted to mention.
Okay, so Brent?
Thank you. Three really quick items. The first, Saturday, I attended the Asian American and FBI Law Enforcement Town Hall at the Chrysler Museum. And Councilmember Berluci was so kind to host that organization. It was led by Patula Moy. She's the founder and president of the Asian American Alliance. And the topic was very pertinent regarding hate crimes among Asian Americans and hate crimes in general. Discussed the F, what the FBI and law enforcement was seeing in terms of the uptick in hate crimes, not only against Asian Americans, but other groups as well. So it was very informative. Our own deputy chief, Rio, was there and also chief, the chief of police from Newport News in Hampton. And so it was a really good informative conversation about what's going on in the country and really how to recognize those hate crimes, how they're being prosecuted, and how people are certainly be impacted by those crimes. Secondly, I attended Atlantic Shores Baptist Church Sunday. And certainly liked to visit churches in the area when I can in District 7. And they are hosting a Night of Prayer for Israel. And I thought it was pertinent since the council supported the resolution to support Israel last Tuesday. And so I thought about Councilmember Shulman and the body as well. And I reached out to Pastor Jones and let him know that we as a body stand and support Israel and supported that resolution. And the event will take place on Monday, the 30th at 7:00 PM. Again, that's Prayer for Israel. And they also wanted me to invite other council members as well. Lastly, I would just say, I'm really looking forward to the Festival for Youth in the Level Green Park this Saturday. Really pleased to see the, the support from the community, our community partners who are supporting our youth as I've requested in initiating this event. And it's going to be a fusion of community as we focus on our youth and give them activities and culture. We'll have local artists there from the area who will perform and we'll highlight some of the artists and information. They will have activities for our youth and free food for the young people as well. And so I, I do want to thank some of our community partners like Antidote Agency and Positive Vibes Radio. They've been very supportive, share my interest in supporting the youth in Level Green in the College Park areas. And so I'm so glad to partner with them and I'm so glad to see this event go forward. I'm looking for a great event that day. It'll take place from 6 o'clock, excuse me, from 2 to 6 o'clock on Saturday.
Thank you, Chris.
Back in May, I had an opportunity to spend some time with Coastal Virginia Community Rowing and got out on the water with them and happy that they're back on the water, Coach Melissa. We've talked a lot about sports and kind of the youth and what it does. And so I just want to give a shout out. This past weekend, the Princess Anne Crew Club participated in the Oyster Roof Regatta. And they, Princess Anne Crew walked away with two first place awards, one for the men's varsity, four plus, and a second for mixed varsity, eight plus. So this community organization is working really hard to get disadvantaged and children out on the water, as well as just high school students, middle school students that want to participate. So I want to continue to recognize that they are not only excelling, but they are happy to be back out at Failure Creek. And I want to appreciate, just say thanks to Parks and Recs for working with them.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer?
Yes, I wanted to shout out Dr. Amelia Ross Hammond and the Virginia African American Cultural Center. This past Saturday, they hosted their rescheduled for the culture event. It was rescheduled because of the rain on October 14th, so it was moved to this past Saturday at Virginia Westland. And a number of you all were in attendance, including the mayor and Sabrina and Josh and Worth and Sheriff Holcomb and the sheriff's department. And a number of small vendors were participating, small businesses and members from the community. But I did want to commend Dr. Amelia Ross Hammond, not only as their director, or not, excuse me, not as their founder, Tamara Smithers is their director, but Amelia was surprised with the inaugural Amelia Ross Hammond Trailblazer Award for her work in preserving African American history and art. And she was the first awardee of that award. And, you know, the V A A C C will continue to recognize people in the community for that. So I wanted to celebrate that. And one more, two more things. Yesterday, or what's today? When did the?
Tuesday.
Thank you. Today's Tuesday. Yesterday, at the Virginia Beach Public Schools in partnership with Bay Point Credit Union and some other things that I should have written down, announced or celebrated a grand opening for the ATC Renewable Energy Program hosted at Tidewater Community College. And so Councilmember Berluci was in attendance, along with school board members, Trinace Riggs and Mike Callahan. And we were able to look at the space and the teenagers from a number of different Virginia Beach City Public Schools were showing us science that was beyond my capacity to understand how it worked, but it did. And they were able to demonstrate all the possibilities with renewable energy. So it's cool to see that emerging program and how that can shape our economy going forward as we're shifting towards renewable energy. And finally, as an announcement, so Boys and Girls Club, which is located off of Rosemont Road, on Thursday, October 26th, from 2:00 to 6:00 PM, they're hosting an open house where parents and children can learn about after-school programming, homework help and other opportunities to get engaged with academic success, but also other ways to support kids in our community. So the program is called Lights On After School. And that, again, is taking place at the Boys and Girls Club of Southeastern Virginia, which is located right behind Tidewater Community College. And it's on Thursday from 2:00 to 6:00 PM. So if you'd like to learn more about that program, please drop in and see what's going on.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Worth and then Amelia.
Thanks, Mayor. I also want to congratulate Councilmember Ross Hammond for yet another award. Congratulations. Also, the Museum of Contemporary Art, Mocha, operated the Boardwalk Art Show last weekend to a perfect weekend. They, the weather helped, but lots of volunteers. That's the 60th, 70th year that that Boardwalk Art Show is older than our city is. So it's, continues to thrive and to do well. This weekend, the Wicked Race, put on by JNA Racing, happened Saturday at the Oceanfront. And I'm going to show up at 7:30 to help start it. And they say to come dressed in a costume, so I think I will go as a wicked politician.
Okay, Amelia?
I just wanted to mention two things I forgot. As part of that Something in the Water and the NBA, they revealed the, the rendering for the basketball court during this fall festival. And so we're happy to see that they're going to be moving forward. They're going to fully fund the entire refurbishing and the floor and so forth. And Park and Recs are involved with that. Also, this weekend, on the 28th, lots of things are happening, but from an African American historic point, they are showing off and congratulating a group. A lot of you know about the Norfolk Seventeenth, and I think we had invitations sent to all of us, that they are having, similarly in Centerville, there was a group that integrated the Virginia Beach Public Schools. So they're like the Virginia Beach Thirty. And so they will be, even though they're not kids anymore, but sharing their stories, I think is at Bethel Church. So that's happening between 1:30 and 3:30 on Saturday, the 28th.
Anybody else? I have two things. Recently, Inside Business acknowledged 40, under 40 honorees in the region. Proud to say Jennifer Rouse was mentioned and honored for your stellar work, you know, with TCC, but also your vision about getting universities together and building regional cooperation and everything. So let's hear it for Jennifer. And Saturday night, I had the pleasure of going, a group called Lift. And Jim White and his wife, Krista, have been doing this for 15 years. And they've been going into the homeless community and at-risk. And they've been going into the homeless community and at-risk children community and getting them into physical shape, nutrition, uh, setting life's goals for them, empowerment, building self-esteem. And they have one gentleman there, uh, who is a, uh, homeless for, I believe he said 15 years, uh, you know, and has substance abuse problems. And he told us about the marathon that he ran recently, you know, not too long ago. These are the type of groups that are out there, you know, laboring sometime in obscurity in our community that are doing really, really great things. But I do wanna give them a massive shout out, you know, and, uh, you know, that's what makes Virginia Beach so great. Thank you. Okay, at this point, uh, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from the open meeting allowed by Section 2.23711A. Code of Virginia is meanted for the following purposes. Public contract, discussions of the award of public contract involving the expenditure of public funds and discussions in terms of scope such as contract where discussion into an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.23711A29. One is the ESM contract, then Something in the Water, then the Lifecard Contract, and then H Street. In security matters, discussion or plans to protect public safety as it relates to terrorist activities or specific security threats or vulnerabilities and briefings by staff members, legal counsel or law enforcement or emergency service officials concerning actions taken to respond to such matters or related to threats to public safety. Discussion of information included in this chapter pursuant to subdivision three or four to Sections 2.2-3705.2, where discussion in an open meeting would jeopardize the safety of any person or the security of the facility, building, structure, information technology or software, a so, software program, or discussion of reports or plans related to security of any government facility or building or structure or the safety of persons using such facility, building or structure pursuant to Section 2.23711A19, and that would be the Housing Resource Center. And then finally, personnel matters, discussion of considerations or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees or employees of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2371A1, and that's council appointments of boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. Do I have a motion?
Seven.
Okay.
Councilmember Palucci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Remick?
Aye.
Councilmember Ross Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Shulman?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Wood?
Aye.
Okay, we are recessed into closed.
We're gonna reconvene our session today. We're gonna have, uh, as indicated before, a, uh, you know, a vote tonight of Vice Mayor Wilson is home recovering from surgery and doing very well. I ask now for certification of the closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
The vote is open. By vote of nine to zero, you have certified the closed session to be in accordance with a motion to recess.
Okay, uh, tonight's order of business, ordinance to declare easements in excess for the city's needs and authorize the sale of easements to Dominion Energy Virginia Ray Electric Transmission Corridor for the Coastal Virginia Offshore Wind Projects, District 2, 5, and 6. Um, do we, uh, any speakers?
No, sir, no speakers.
Do we have a motion?
I'll move approval.
Second. We have any other discussion? The vote is open.
One second, please. The vote is open. By vote of nine to zero, you approve the ordinance.
Okay, there being no other business, we are adjourned.